Good evening, I'd like to call the meeting to order. The first order business is can we please have a moment of silence? Please stand for the flag salute.
In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act,
a public notice of this meeting has been sent to board members, all district schools, the Herald News, the suburban trans, the record, the messenger, West Milford Town Hall, the county superintendent's office, the board attorney, Cable Vision of Warwick and West Milford TV 77, and posted in the administration building. Copies of the board meeting calendar resolution were provided to all local media, Town Hall, township library, and all district schools. Roll call, Ms. Francisco?
Mrs. Ricano.
Here.
Mr. Sidewitz. Mr. Lippi. Mrs. Dwyer.
Here.
Mr. Guarino. Ms. O'Brien.
Here.
Mrs. Lockwood.
Here.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
Here.
Mrs. Romeo.
Here.
Little form.
Thank you. I'd like to first ask our student representative, Jennifer. Forgot your last name, I'm sorry.
Scallis.
Jennifer Scallis, give her report.
All District Arts Festival was held on March 29th. On April 2nd, the Student Council and the West Milford High School-
Uh, is the red light on?
The red light.
We're having problems with some of them. Some of them are not going on at all.
All District Arts Festival was held on March 29th. On April 2nd, the Student Council and the West Milford High School PTSO posted a food truck, craft vendor fair, and car show. Before spring break, the Student Council held a food drive. All items were donated to the local food pantry. The week of April 17th, we celebrated Earth Day with a spirit week. The World Language National Audits Society induction was held on April 19th. WFHS participated in the National Day of Silence on April 21st and collected money to donate to the Trevo Project. Today, the senior prom packets were released. In honor of Senior Decision Day on May 1st, students will be wearing clothing to show what colleges they will be attending.
Thank you very much.
I make a motion at 6:33 to approve the following resolution that the board immediately go into executive session for approximately 30 minutes for the purpose of conducting a grievance hearing. The executive session minutes will not be released until such time as the privilege of confidentiality is no longer applicable.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good evening. We're returning from executive session. Mrs. Francisco, roll call please.
Mrs. Ricano.
Here.
Mr. Sidewitz. Mr. Lippi. Mrs. Dwyer.
Here.
Mr. Guarino.
Here.
Mrs. O'Brien.
Here.
Mrs. Lockwood.
Here.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
Here.
Mrs. Romeo.
Here. Next is the superintendent's report.
Yes, good evening. We're invitation members of the public. Welcome to our equal meeting. Just this past week, the department released the school performance reports for 2021-22. This is the new school report card. It's now called the School Performance Report. We have, I provided the board members with three copies, just elementary, middle, high school. I'll give you one elementary as opposed to all six. Members of the public, we do have a link on our website where you can go right to the Department of Ed and search by district, by school. It's a pretty comprehensive document, about 40 pages, over 40 pages. So I'm not going to go over the whole packet. But it gives us our demographics, our school, our testing information, our school finance, a whole lot more. However, the unique part of the school performance report for this year is it's always a three-year look back. So the three years, it looks back, it only looks back to 2022 testing data. That would have been a year ago. Spring of '21 and spring of '20, the state assessments were canceled. So it's a sort of a wonky school year, or a wonky school performance report. There's really nothing to compare it to. Nonetheless, the department did give every school a summative rating and a sum of score on a 1 to 100 scale as well. So these documents form the basis of may of our goals for next school year. How we're doing now, how we can get better, what areas we want to focus upon. So again, members of the board, you have copies of this. Members of the public, please go to our website and you will see a link for the Department of Education School Performance Reports. And then you can search for West Milford and all our schools.
Can someone make a motion for special reports?
I make a motion to approve the following Board of Education meeting minutes. March 15th, 2023, preliminary budget hearing. Special action meeting, March 15th, 2023, executive session. March 28th, workshop regular meeting. March 28th, 2023, executive session.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I abstain on them. I was not present.
I abstain on March 15th. I was not present.
Thank you. My president's report. I've been asked to share some announcements. On May 13th at 9:00 a.m. at the REC Center, formerly known as the PAL Building, there is an event, Scott's Fun Run. And Scott's Fun Run is for prevention for substance misuse. An amazing activity to raise money to help those in our community. Another event on Friday, May 19th, is baseball Little League Family Night at 4:00 p.m. at Hillgown Field. I've been asked to share that with the Board of Education members that you're all invited to both of those events. I'd like to give a shout out to Eagle Scout Francisco Petricillo. Congratulations. And there are a lot of Eagle Scouts, so send me an email when you complete and have your award ceremony. We're very proud of all of you. And I did attend, for a short time, the actual wrestling event at St. Joseph's. That was extremely exciting. The coolest, the most interesting thing for me is I heard grown men in the parking lot discussing the crowd of West Milford. So it seemed, I don't know these people. It seemed as if they were wrestling, you know, fans. And the one guy says to the other, "Well, you know, it's always the crowd that makes the event, and these kids are good." And so I was like, wow, that's, you know, I don't know who these people are. Otherwise, I'd give them a shout out. But it was really cool to hear that our kids were a great crowd at a wrestling event. It was like, not as WWE, but something with, you know, serious wrestling. And I also just, I really, I think, we don't want to say thank you to our fire department, to our mayor, and councilman, Matt Conlin, who was very involved during the fire, and just everyone that really worked hard to keep West Milford safe. That was an emotional time. That was a really emotional time. And that's something that, in the history of West Milford, that none of us have ever gone through. Being the granddaughter of someone who started one of the first fire departments ever in West Milford, I am extremely proud of our fire department, of our firemen and women. And our administration and our board members pooled some money together. We donated items and brought cards. I'll let you know, I did go to all six firehouses. Two of them at the current time, there was no one there. The trucks were out and they were busy. And four of them, I spoke with people. I gave them our appreciation. And they really were very thankful. It was just, like I said, a very, very emotional time. But, you know, thankful for them. And we are through it and safe. And that is my report. Public comment. Oh, yes, thank you. I'd like to go back to Mr. Novak's report, Director of Education.
All right, thank you. I just have brief announcements tonight. Well, I just want to update everyone on our two large summer programs. One being the Summer Explorer STEM Camp. We did our registration about two weeks ago. We met capacity in a matter of minutes for both weeks. What we found is the, I guess, the process now with the, how fast it sells out. We have multiple parents who sometimes log in just to make sure that their child gets in. So we did find some duplicate registrations, which made it great because we were able to, anyone who signed up or looked to get on the waiting list was able to be registered into the group. So at this point, we have everybody who has shown interest registered into our STEM camp. But we are still taking students for the list if possible. Our summer learning camp registration went out recently and our numbers are, our numbers are going up. We are, we're probably near about 100 students, which we typically get between 150 and 180. So we are in a good place for that. And the middle school and high school scheduling update, I'll have a more elaborate update at our next meeting. There's nothing to report on that.
Any questions? Yes.
So our capacity is 120 for the STEM camp. Yeah, we do two weeks. Right, each week we do 120. We only allow students to participate in one week so we can get as many students in the number.
And that's grade what?
Incoming, incoming 1 through 5. So our current students' grades cater for it.
Thank you. Okay, the next part of this meeting is public comment. And today is our first day on the agenda. You can see our public comment portion has changed. And there are five governing rules for someone that is going to speak. And I no longer need to read all that. But you do, if you would like to speak on pages 3 and 4, please review the rules to speak. With that, I will let you know that all speakers will have five minutes to speak until a period of 30 minutes transpires. Before speaking, please state your name, group affiliation, and address for the record. Members of the public who've requested to speak prior to the meeting will be recognized by the chair first. After speaking, all speakers are asked to sign the register provided and give their full name, group affiliation, and their address. All statements shall be directed to the sitting officer. No participant may address or question board members individually. All speakers are expected to have read the statement within the agenda regarding the regulations concerning public comments. Members of the public are reminded that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. And do you know that we have a number of people that have signed up to speak about agenda items only? I mean, non-agenda items are the people that have signed up so far. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on agenda items?
Hi, my name is Jess Cohen. I am one of your first grade teachers here in West Milford. I'm actually speaking about number two under personnel regarding Doug Haber's retirement. I wanted to take a moment to express my deepest gratitude for all that Doug Haber has done for the district of West Milford, myself, and so many others. His unwavering dedication to his students and his passion for teaching has made a profound impact on many, but especially in my life, which is where our story kind of began back in sixth grade. He became a mentor to me and then ultimately a colleague as I became a teacher here in West Milford. My first memory of Doug was in sixth grade as a representative from UGL singing the national anthem at the high school homecoming football game. Extremely nervous and lacking any confidence, I met Doug, who immediately made me feel calm and gave me nothing but praise and kindness. He even said to me, "I can't wait for you to come to the high school and be in the choir someday." And as silly as it sounds, I never forgot it. And sure enough, I spent four years in the choir at that high school. Doug filled my life with music and ultimately guided me to the musical, where my love of theater began. One of the greatest moments of my career was being able to take over the high school musical program, a program that Doug had carved into something nothing short of exceptional. Huge shoes to fill. And it's taken two of us to do it, Heather Burns and myself. But it has become my home, my pride and joy, and the greatest love for the last 12 years. It has not gone unnoticed that Doug has never missed a show that we have produced. And while I know that he comes to support his current students, it means the world to me that he continues to work and come and support not only students, but us because he values what he created here in West Milford. And he wants to see it continue to grow and be bigger and better every year because roots truly do matter. I thank Doug today publicly because as teachers, we do not get to hear when we have made an effect on people in our lives, students, adults, colleagues. His kindness, his humor, his guidance has never gone unnoticed. Doug, I thank you for 28 years of service. You will truly be missed. And again, you have left a huge and very important shoes to fill.
Do we have another speaker? Go ahead, please.
I have my mic on, it's okay.
Yes, Nathan Bedford, 457 Lake Side Road, New Jersey. I just want to reiterate, and it was very sad to hear about Doug Haber. But I'm sure after 28 years, he'll be enjoying his retirement. I also was a student of Doug Haber's during choir. He gave me an opportunity to be part of the musical for two years, gave me a solo with the music band. And we'll be live streaming his last concert on Thursday, May 4th at 7:00 p.m. We'll reach out and send the link through George Jordan and the TV sites. Thank you, Doug Haber, for giving me the opportunity of being a master singer. And hope to see you there.
Anyone else?
Seeing none, I'd like to close public comments.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any changes to the agenda? Can someone make a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mrs. Lockwood, education?
I make a motion to approve agenda items 1 through 8 on education.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Roll call, Ms. Francisco?
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Mrs. Ricano?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
I make a motion to approve the following agenda item. Incident report, oh, nine, sorry. Incident report number 2023 E5 as substantiated, 2023 M11 as substantiated.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Roll call, Ms. Francisco?
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Mrs. Ricano?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke, personnel, junior parents?
Yes, I'd like to move items 1 through, 1 through 32 and hand carry 33 to 36.
Second.
Questions and comments? Harry and then Debbie.
I have two comments. One is, one is that Judy Thomas at the high school, our special ed teacher, is an incredible human being. She has, she's always had a heart of gold. She has respect for the students, respect for staff. The administration respects her. She's going to be a loss to the district. The other is Cynthia Dantonio. And I'm very sorry to see Cynthia go because she had a lot to do with even my own children and speech. And I thank her for her years of service. And the district was sorely misspoke of them. So thank you.
I'm going to piggyback on the first two comments made about Mr. Haber. You don't know who, when, why, and how a teacher makes a difference in your child's life. And to this very day, he has done a phenomenal job with my youngest son, Dan. And I could go on and tell stories, but I would just share this really brief thing with the community. When it came time for Dan to look for colleges, he wrote a letter of recommendation that was probably one of the finest letters I ever read. And the reason I say this is, yes, you know, teachers do a phenomenal job in writing letters and they talk about the accolades of, you know, of the student that is asking for this information for their college. But what he did is he totally, in a very short, three to four paragraph form, gave the essence of my child to George Mason University, which is where we ended up going to school. And to this very day, I will never forget that. Mr. Haber, you are truly a gem. What you've done for the music department, for all the students, past, present, and future, it will just, I can't thank you enough. I truly cannot thank you enough for all that you've done. And then this other comment I'd like to make about Diana Hackett. Why? Why are you leaving? Why? You are a sweetheart. I'm going to miss you dearly. I torture her, I mean, I work with her at UGL as far as going to do things over at UGL on my own time. And I will miss you very much. She's a great lady. And I will miss, I will miss, and happy retirement to all of those who've put in their time and their blood, sweat, and tears. We truly appreciate everything you've done for our students. Thank you.
I want to speak also about Cynthia. I know her when she was Miss Cinderella. And I think that, and I know what a difference she made even for my own children. And it is a great loss. But I hope you enjoy your retirement. And I thank you for all the service and time that you've given to West Milford. As far as Doug, I, there are no words. He's touched so many lives that it's, you know, it's hard to understand when you've seen something for years. But he truly does epitomize a teacher who has students that keep coming back to say thank you. And they're excited to show him where they have landed in their life. So he will be, there will be a great hope in our department there. And there are going to be big shoes to fill. And I just want to say thank you to all of these retirees that are on here. Some I know, some I don't. But I wish them well and I hope that they enjoy their retirement years. Thank you.
I just want to piggyback on, I guess, everybody else and wish the retirees the best retirement. But I want to speak specifically about one, Mrs. Dantonio. She touched my life for so many years. She helped my son to become the student that he is today. She thought outside the box. She worked together not only with her students, but with all the students and the staff and the parents to really try and give every child that needed speech the speech that they needed. I wish you luck in your retirement and joy. You so deserve it. And I'm sad for all those students that aren't going to get to meet and have you in their lives. Thank you, Mrs. Dantonio.
Following the sentiments of my colleagues here, I would like to wish everyone on the list, when you look through the list of retirements, there are like hundreds of years of service there. And I don't know all of them. Some of them I've worked with and have already been, you know, thanked for their time and their dedication to our children. Patty Roberts has been a bus driver in our district for, I don't know exactly how many years. 27, I was going to say, but I know that she was there when I was a child. 27 years. And, you know, when you put your kid in, or any, you know, even when you figure eighth grader or you're freshmen on bus, no matter what grade they're in, to put them in the hands of someone else and trust them is a big deal, you know, as a parent. And so thank you for 27 years of service. The other person that sticks out to me is Tim Struble, head custodian at PK. Mr. Struble is a fireman in town along with, I believe, his entire family. And have been in this town for a very, very long time. Two of his family members were with my grandpa when they started the fire department. And so Mr. Struble has a wealth of knowledge in how to run, you know, a building, whatever it is that it takes to do that job and for safety. And so thank you for your time here. But good luck to all of our retirees. Any other comments or questions?
Can I comment?
Yes.
I just want to remind everyone, last year, we began the process of inviting our retirees back at our June meeting. So we will have the opportunity, you know, it's hard to pick and choose which retiree we want to, you know, we're all passionate about, you know, some of these people, or all these people who are retiring. So we'll get an opportunity again in June to invite them back and, you know, give them a plaque, get them their rounds of applause, and, you know, once again, say some kind of words. So Diana, be ready because I'll have a nice long paragraph.
Diana may not be there that night. Who knows?
But that paragraph's coming regardless. Is Anna, we've got a busy night. I don't want to-
So I have a question, number 25. Does anyone know the date of the scholarship night? Thank you. June 7th at 6:30 at the high school is the 2023 Distinguished Scholars and Community Scholarship Night. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Mrs. Ricano?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
I've seen on 17 and 18 and yes on everything else. Operations and Finance, Mr. Guarino?
So I can make a motion to move item 1 under Operations and Finance?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Same cool name, but cool new-
Haircut.
Place, yeah. Nice to hear that. For one, I'm glad you're here. I'm a great senior. Thank you.
Anyone else? Roll call.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Mrs. Ricano?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to move items 2 through 8 under Operations and Finance?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Rocco? Mr. Greenow?
Yes.
Mrs. Fracano?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to move item number 9 under Operations and Finance?
Second.
Questions or comments? Rocco, please? Mr. Greenow?
Abstain.
Mrs. Fracano?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Abstain.
Mrs. Romeo? Abstain.
And I would like to make a motion to move items 10 and 11 under Operations and Finance?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Rocco? Mr. Greenow?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fracano?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood, policy, please?
I make a motion to approve agenda items 1 through 19.
Second.
Any questions or comments on policy? Rocco? Mrs. O'Brien? Hold on. Come back there. Mr. Greenow?
So, I'm going to abstain.
On hold.
On hold.
Mrs. Fracano?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
I'll abstain on hold.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Committee reports? Parks and Rec?
We had a meeting last week. Highlights, Bubbling Springs Day Camp Registration is now open. The registration packet and brochure are available online. They...Bubbling Springs is hiring lifeguards, day camp counselors, and swim instructors to join Team Bubble. All applicants must be 16 years old, 15 years old for lifeguards. They also have a new story at the Nissenzo Park Story Walk, "The Day the Crayons Quit", by Drew Daywalt. So, go check that out. The floors in Gym 1 and 2 were rough-sanded and got new polyurethane, and the floor in Gym 3 is getting new rubber for it on the floor to repair and paint. It'll have lines for basketball, volleyball, and two pickleball courts. And they got two new portable basketball nets, so the Gym 3 is going to practically be brand-new. And they are looking for someone to be a caretaker at the teen center, and in exchange, you get use of the second-floor apartment. So, if you're looking for a place, that might be the job for you. Otherwise...
Did they say what grades or age the storybook is for?
I think it's for any age. I mean, the story of "The Day the Crayons Quit", I feel like some of you in the audience might know better than I do, but I feel like it's early elementary. Have you ever seen that? The book, "The Day the Crayons Quit"?
No. If you've never done a walk across the street on the storybook walk, it is amazing. It's a cool field trip. It's nice for all ages. It's really fun. Thank you. Safety.
Nothing to report.
Superintendents around table?
Claire went for me last month, and we have a meeting on Thursday, so Claire's going to report on that. So, these are the minutes from February 23rd, 2023, which seems like so long ago, but I guess these are them. So, there was a question in regards to Italian for the 7th and 8th grade students. The answer was, there is a possibility of more cuts due to budget constraints. However, there is no definitive answer. Potential cuts are still in discussion, and there should be an answer in a month. Question on drug testing. For suspected drug use, the district pays as long as the family opts to have the test done at the district's preferred testing site. Families have the option of having the testing done privately at their own expense. Random tests are administered in the nurse's office at the high school level. There was a question on transportation and complaints, and the order is you go to your principal first, and then if you don't get anything resolved, you can go to the next step, which would be the Transportation Department. Media specialists was one of the topics. High school sports clubs was also brought up. Elementary homework and kindergarten enrollment numbers.
When elementary homework was brought up, did you...was the new policy discussed?
No, I mean, it's been an ongoing, I feel. I feel like I haven't been to superintendent roundtable in a long time. I feel this has been a discussion for quite a while, the elementary homework. What was brought up is what I feel is always brought up. The homework should be thoughtful assignments, math, reading. Vocab, families are welcome to request more enrichment work for their student if they feel necessary.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Back to you, Mrs. Lockwood, for Passaic County School Board. Sorry.
That's okay. So, there is a meeting, May 8th. It's a Monday. I will be attending at 6:30, I believe. And any of us are welcome to go. You just have to respond.
I'm sorry. Claire, did you also get an invite to a dinner from them? That I just...
Yes. You want me to speak to that?
Is that for all board members or just...
I didn't even look at it.
Okay.
Because I didn't see all...
I'll look at it if you want me to. We are invited then to a dinner at the Brown soon. Did everyone get a letter invited to that?
We got...we had an email, then.
Maybe.
You got a letter? I got a...I think...
I did get a letter. I will pass it around and share it with all of you. As board members, we were invited. I cannot go, so I gave it to Claire as vice president, and I wanted to make sure that everyone knew about it, if you're all invited.
I just...
I just handed it to her.
It might not just be the president.
An hour ago. Oh, okay.
I mean, it is...I don't remember getting this at all, Kate, so...and it is just...
It was addressed just to me, and I'm inviting Claire to go as the vice president.
Is that the scholarship...is that the celebratory?
No.
No.
You could see it after. Or you could pass it around now if you guys want to see it. But it is Passaic County School Board, so I wanted to make sure that you guys knew I did get that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's black tie.
It is black tie event, yes.
Then I'm definitely...
That actually made me want to go.
Andy's going. Okay. New Jersey School Board, Mrs. Van Dyke?
I was asked to be taken off of this. I think Will was handling all of that.
Okay, thank you.
Because I was away for a while, I thought Rocco was...
No problem. Mrs. O'Brien, legislative?
So, does my voice hold out? Really, there isn't that much to report as far as what's going on in our legislative world, because the report that I did last month kind of covered everything as far as the, you know, the funding, the S-2, the Lawn Disease Prevention Instruction, I mentioned that last month. The social media impact study and the suicide prevention train that I brought up in great detail back a month ago is just basically what's going on in our legislative world right now. So, there's really not too much, you know, more to report at this time.
Thank you. You're welcome. Technology oversight, Mr. Greenow?
No report.
Okay. Township Board of Education Joint Committee meeting. There's not maybe of the report?
Sure.
Okay, we did have a meeting. I don't recall the date. April 3rd. April 3rd around. And we will be having another meeting soon with the mayor and the councilmen and women and the township. We are in discussion about Hillcrest right now. It's an ice door, and we're just talking about ideas. Municipal Alliance.
Claire's going to do that, too. I have to thank her. She covered my spots.
Right now, thank you, Claire. Back to Claire.
I have to thank her because she covered my spots while I was away, and I thank her very much.
So, this is from the West Milford Municipal Alliance, met on Monday, April 10th. Dustin Barak from the Hope Institute, which is based on Cahill Cross, presented about his program and services in West Milford. He decided to join the alliance as a voting member, which is wonderful. Discussion about the WMMA fact sheet, future programs and funding, including youth leadership grants. Future events include Scott's Fund Run, which is on Saturday, May 13th, beginning at 9:00 a.m. at the West Milford Parks and Rec Building. Next meeting is on Monday, May 8th at 7:00 p.m. at the West Milford Public Library and is also on Zoom.
Thank you. I didn't think of this earlier in my president's report, so I'll add it on right here. Ms. Papas is here. I believe she's a teacher at UGL, and she started Scott's Fund Run for our community as a prevention activity, and like I said before, raised quite a bit of money to help our community members. So, I just want to thank her very much.
Can I throw a 20 cent comment?
Yes, go ahead.
So, without sounding old, which I probably will be sounding old in a second, I've known Ms. Papas since she was a little rug rat over at PK School, and has turned out to be a phenomenal person, a phenomenal teacher, and a phenomenal asset to our community. And as employee of Highlands Family Success Center and the Center for Family Resources, we work in tandem with Scott's Fund Run as far as bringing supplies and coordinating the activity itself. My only beef at this particular junction is not Sunday, so I can't scream, "Sunday, Sunday, Sunday." So, it's not Sunday, Sunday, it's Saturday, 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 May 13th over at the West Milford Parks and Rec, and I really hope to see you there. It's a worthwhile, fun event, and it's tied into a stigma-free...it's a stigma-free run, and it supports our community members. And it's...it takes a village to help everybody, and let's, you know, I'd like to keep it that way to the best of our ability. Thank you, Ms. Papas.
Thank you. And the Special Education Parent Advisory Committee.
Do you know?
They met on April 4th. It was actually a well-attended meeting, both from parents and from administration. Dr. Anamon was there, Mrs. Miller was there, and Dr. Reza came, who will be the new Director of Special Services, to sit in on the full meeting and listen to the parents. There was a lot of discussion. It went very long. I know they gave updates on summer programs. Everybody listened, and there's no meeting on, I think, so far for another meeting. There's nothing on the agenda.
Thank you, Mrs. Lockwood. Someone's phoning in.
I don't...I can't find it.
Oh, that's fine. You didn't...
You want to see why?
You could have let us get free. Old business. Does anyone have any old business? Will's not here for old business, so does anyone else who has been? I was kidding.
Move to close old business.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Does anyone have any new business?
Move to close new business.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. This is a portion of our second public comment. All speakers have five minutes to speak until a period of 30 minutes transpires. Before speaking, please state your name, group affiliation, and address for the record. Members of the public who've requested to speak prior to the meeting will be recognized by the chair first. After speaking, all speakers are asked to sign a register provided and give their full name, group affiliation, and their address. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No participant may address or question board members individually. All speakers are expected to have read the statement within the agenda regarding the regulations concerning public comments. Members of the public are reminded that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. Our first person who signed up is on everyone's agenda, Sheri Collado.
Good evening, I'm Sheri Collado, I reside at 15 East Burke Road in Oak Ridge, New Jersey. I'm here tonight on behalf of the West Milford National Day of Prayer Task Force. We have a group of churches, local churches, that have gotten together to organize the National Day of Prayer, which is on Thursday, May 4th as well. It's going with another function the same night, but it's good. But I'm here to invite all of you, and if I may, can I just ask a quick interview?
Thank you.
And just to explain a little bit about what we're going to be doing that day, we have three events. The first event is going to take place at the Veterans Memorial Park in front of Town Hall. That's at 12 o'clock noon. The other will have worship and prayer for the country and for our community. Then at 4 o'clock, we're going to be meeting at the Board of Ed to pray for our schools and our teachers, our students, all of you. And we take this very seriously. It's very important to all of us, and we would love for any of you to attend. We would love to be able to pray with you. We're also going to have our main event at the McPeen Middle School this year, where it's opened up to the public as well. We're going to have worship in the beginning. We're going to open up with one of our students from the high school, with the National Anthem. We're going to have worship, and we're going to have prayer available. We're going to be praying for all of the seven, what we call the seven mountains of influence and education. It's things like education, government, military, church, family, arts, and entertainment. Those are basically the ones, but there's a few more. And the pastors from these churches that have gotten together will be praying for those seven influences, and education, of course, is a big one. And Ms. Romeo has agreed to come and represent all of you. So, she will be attending, and we hope that you will be able to attend. And of course, the public is invited as well. So, we're looking forward to it. It's an opportunity to join our nation, because the entire nation is involved in this one day. Unity and prayer is very important. It's very powerful, and we're hoping that there is going to be opportunities to pray for the problems that our nation is facing and our community faces. So, it's just our way of being able to get back and join in unity with each other, to pray for each other. So, we invite you all there. We hope you can make it. Thank you.
Thank you. So, the trustees know I can go to the 7:00 p.m. that night. I cannot go to the other events.
I'll go to the...
Thank you, Terri.
I would probably go to the 12:00.
Great, thank you. And so, the public knows if I get invited to something, I do try to come to all, as many things as I can, and be involved with anything that affects our community. And I know my trustees are the same, so thank you for the invites. Our next speaker is Lea Mora.
Hello, I'm Lea Mora. I am a student at 18 Lincoln Avenue, West Milford, New Jersey. Good evening. My name is Lea Mora. I'm a junior at West Milford High School, and I am currently enrolled in the Italian program. I have taken Italian since I was in 7th grade, and I am now a junior in high school, planning on taking Level 5 AP Italian next school year. This Italian program has taught me so much about culture, history, and the language itself. As someone who already speaks Spanish, I wanted to immerse myself into a new language. This Italian program gives me the opportunity to achieve new goals. I want to succeed in school, and I want colleges to see what I've done throughout my academic years. I plan on attending a four-year competitive college that would like to see consecutive years of a language. Colleges are attracted to students who take those four years. Getting rid of this program would put me at a disadvantage, because colleges will not know as to why I stopped taking Italian my senior year. Taking a language in high school is so crucial because it prepares you for the global marketplace. I would like to study in the area of business, and knowing languages enhances one's opportunity into the business world. This will affect my chances into getting...of getting into a college that I want. But we cannot forget about the rest of the students that have also dedicated their time into the Italian program. Those students that have taken a year or more of Italian will have to switch languages, which is not an easy thing to do. I believe that you should be doing what's best for students and putting them first. It is disappointing to see that all the hard work that I... that I have put in for the last five years is being dismissed. Vincenzo Surtasimo has been one of my greatest inspirations, and she has helped me reach so many of my goals. Mr. Surtasimo has been with the school for 23 years and has grown the Italian program more and more. She's truly an amazing teacher. And most importantly, she cares about her students and puts them first. It was earlier last week when my classmates and I were inducted into the Italian Arts Society that we will not be able to do anything with that program. I'm worried about how this will affect my last year of high school and the rest of the lower Italian classes. I hope that program is important, not only to me, but to our school, is not removed, and that consideration is given to restore. Thank you for listening.
Tiffany San Lucia. Thank you, Lucia.
Hi, I'm Tiffany San Lucia. I'm a junior at West Milford High School, and my address is 5 Circle Boulevard. And I came here today to speak about the same thing that Leah did, which was the possibility of the Italian program being eliminated from our education here. Just like Leah, I've been taking Italian since I was in seventh grade. And my sister before me went through the Italian program throughout high school. The Italian program lets us learn new things about our culture for those of us who have Italian ancestry and just the culture in general, not even if it's ours. I've learned so much, and it's really opened my eyes and all my classmates' eyes to the beauty of a different country. And without it, I am upset that younger students would not be able to have that same experience, especially freshmen who are just starting and really getting into it. And then like Leah said, they would have to switch into a new language because you have to complete two years consecutively or more for colleges and other things, which would be very difficult for them. But even though Italian by itself is just a really good class, the teaching is really what puts it above and beyond. Signora Surtasimo has been a teacher here for 23 years, and she is an excellent teacher. And she has all those years and a bunch of former students that like to come back and say hi to her to show with. Her teaching style accounts for all the different students, which is much different from a lot of other teachers that we have. She helps everybody individually and has a teaching style that is that the whole class can be receptive to. As someone who kind of struggles in this department because I don't speak any other language but English, she has really helped me. And she's become a very good role model to myself and my classmates. She inspires us to do the best that we can. And we travel and study abroad one day. And I would just like for students after me to be able to have that same experience and to keep the Italian program for them and for everyone.
Quick question. Would you be in the same level as what Leah said that she's going in next year?
Yes, I'm trying to change my schedule so I can actually get into that class again because I had to change some things in my schedule.
And you shared that's a Level 5.
5, yeah, it's an AP class next year.
Thank you.
My older daughter Teresa had sent. She's away at school right now. So she had sent an email. She wanted me to.
Do you have to give?
Deborah San Lucia, I'm Tiffany's mom. So this is Teresa San Lucia. She's a former student. We live at 5 Circle Boulevard. So she wrote, "As a former student of Signora Surtasimo, graduated in 2019, and a future educator, I would like to speak on the impact that she's had on my life since graduating four years ago. I cannot say that I have much relationship with any of my past high school teachers. However, Signora is one of the few that I can say I feel cared about, by, and close to. I can also say my time in Signora's class is still the time that I value and remember fondly. She's a teacher that we all hope for, and I personally hope to emulate. Her dedication to the school district as well as her students has left an indelible mark on me, and I can only hope to achieve all that she has in my future career. Moreover, she has helped me learn more about the culture and the language that I have a very special connection with. As an educator, she is amazing, and even more remarkable is her character and passion for making education meaningful." To further the remarks of both my voters, having a teacher like Signora to educate both my children was and continues to be a privilege. When I was young, the only time that my family ever spoke Italian was when they didn't want us to know what they were saying.
We learned those words.
Only the. So Signora has made Italy and the Italian culture come alive for my children. Unfortunately, my family who came from Italy are no longer alive, and there's no one who has that knowledge like she does. She's that link to them. To lose that resource is not only detrimental to my children, but this entire district. She brings a beautiful language and the entire country of Italy to our township. I hope that you guys would consider all of those who speak tonight and how much Signora means to all of us and to allow her to continue to educate our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Rick Grisuti.
Rick Grisuti, 28 Starlight Road. Sophie Grisuti.
Sophie Grisuti, 28 Starlight Road.
I think we have five minutes together, so I'm here for that.
Actually, you have five minutes each.
Oh, we do.
You're each signed up. Mr. Grisuti, you were signed up first, and then Sophie are signed up next. That's just how the emails came in.
Can we switch it?
Hi.
She wants to go first.
Certainly, you can let her go first. Yeah, no problem.
Hello, I'm Sophie Grisuti. I'm a freshman enrolled in Italian 2. I'm here to voice my concern regarding the school budget cuts, particularly the foreign language program. The study of foreign languages is a necessary aspect to students' learning. These programs open up students to more than what they as an American student have experienced. Foreign studies broaden a student's perspective and teach them different ways of life, again, apart from the American lifestyle. Cutting these programs restricts what I and my fellow students observe about the world around us. Throughout my years of education, I have been taught very little about other cultures. And I now finally, my freshman year, was given the opportunity to understand another culture. It is so important to learn from these other experiences. Language is communication. And in limiting languages, it limits who you can connect with. I'm worried as a student that these cuts won't stop here. I've heard many of my previous West Milford peers apply and attend alternative high schools due to the higher rate of opportunities they offer. Students find their way through these programs, and they find a community and those who they can connect with. I and many other students I know were excited for the opportunity of reaching Italian 4 or even AP levels. These students want the experience of these high-level classes as well as the college opportunities that come with them. I've spoken to my guidance counselor, and she's notified me that I won't have the option to take any other foreign language next year due to the unavailability of spots and the fact that French one will not be offered next year. It is unacceptable to allow students to enroll in a program with the promise of it benefiting them and take it right out from under them. I've been made aware to a friend, I've been made aware that a friend of mine has now realized that many of the colleges she was planning to apply to are no longer an option now due to the lack of language experience she will be faced with if this cut is made. My Italian class has shown me a different way of life and has sparked an interest in me regarding exploring different cultures. Learning the language itself has taught me patience and persistence. Not giving future students this option to have this experience is unacceptable. Cutting academics isn't an option. We must find alternatives and creative ways to keep this program alive.
She helped me apply more than I did to help her. So thank you for this time to address the school board and Dr. Anamon. Both of our children have an awesome experience in the district. They've had some truly great teachers. They've taken greatly to the one of all. I didn't know Ms. Burns was going to be here and Ms. found theater and art program in the district. And please do not make either proposed or discussed budget cuts. Please find a way not to make this bare-bones school experience. Eliminate such beloved programs and teachers. As you've heard, Mr. Surtasimo, who truly inspires and instills a love of language and culture in our students as an example of what schools do at its best. Our older daughter graduated this past year. She was a student of Mr. Surtasimo's all four years. AP Italian, inducted into National Honor Society. The work she does with them is fantastic. Sophie, you met. I'm not going to say what I was going to say about her. She said it. You know, she spoke about the word. So really, also, all the other cuts are really unacceptable as well. You know, we all want a proud staff who are awesome in schools. How are we going to attract families to the community? You know, how will students want to stay? How many kids are going to P C T I, right? All those cuts, if it's true, two media specialists, the E L A at the middle, the one math, the security, social worker at the middle school, E L A high school, math, phys ed, security, guidance, the language. You know, children, what better time for mental health? These kids' lives are hanging in the balance, social workers. It's the wrong move. It's ethically and morally wrong. As board members, I know you got a tough job, and you got to figure out budgets like we all do. You know, but it really is. You're building a community for all of us, all of them. So please make it, you know, make it your drive to support, not, you know, how do students grow? You know, I'm not on the board. I really don't have any ideas. You know, like, make these positions finalized. The admin adjuncts, that's money. Save it. You know, there's so many things I think you guys could do and will be able to figure out. I don't have any answers. I'm sure you could figure it out. Please find a way. Staff is fantastic. Let's continue to be proud of the academics and services everyone provides. Thank you.
Maria Arica. Maria. Euler. Just kidding. Chloe. Maria's not here. I don't see Maria. Chloe.
My name's Chloe Brabag. I'm a student, and my address is 40 Robinson. Hello, my name is Chloe Brabag. I am in the 11th grade, and I'm currently enrolled in Italian 4 Honors and am planning on taking Italian 5 AP next year. This evening, I will be addressing the consideration of discontinuing the Italian program and the reasons why doing so would not be beneficial to a fairer. Five years ago, I went to Italy with my family, and I had an amazing time. The only thing I regret is not knowing the Italian culture and language. At the time, I was jealous of my brother because he could communicate with others and involve himself more with the Italian lifestyle. This is all because he took six years in Italian, and since then, I aspire to do the same. The chance of my opportunity being cut short is one that I do not want to take. Even more so, the decision to cut the Italian program would be detrimental to 60 other kids in the school. They would have to relearn a language for the graduation requirement, and doing so could make the language seem more like a chore since that was not their first pick. People choose Italian because they want to learn about it, or else they would have picked a different language. To cut Italian out of the high school curriculum would limit our academic understanding. I think it is agreeable that learning about new cultures is something we should do more of, not remove. Colleges look for students who take four years and four years of a language. And cutting off our time can affect us, especially since I and other students are considering competitive colleges. I not only want to take Italian because of my future, but because of my love for it as well. I want to take the biliteracy test next year and pass it. And I want the other Italian kids to have that opportunity as well. I've always enjoyed the environment of the classroom. And it is honestly the class I mostly look forward to. I know that the other students who came here today can agree. These opportunities are ones that I could not have without taking Italian, including being taught by a great teacher as well. I want myself, my classmates, and other students to strive for greatness in this language by reaching our fullest potential. And we can't do that without your help in keeping this program in our town. In two days, 140 people have signed and supported us in our cause for keeping this program alive. Hopefully, you can support us as well. Thank you for your time.
Kim McCook.
Hi, Kim McCook, 64th Road, New Jersey. The young ladies pretty much expressed everything so beautifully. And Rick, I think you stole my notes. My daughter is a freshman in high school, and she started with Italian in old school. And she came home in tears the other day that she would have to start over. Having a child with a learning disability can learn the difference. Finally, excited to take a class that they want to take. And now they can't, and having to start over. And as I expressed earlier, it becomes a chore when it's not your choice. To do that to the kids is just unthinkable. And the fact that now to get into college, to have your second course of the same language, it's going to be detrimental to so many children. In addition to the fact that Surtasimo is just an amazing individual, an amazing teacher, and what she does with the kids and accommodates them so that all children can learn the language that they choose to learn is just phenomenal. In addition to my daughter taking Italian, she is also currently in entrepreneurship. She took marketing as well and loved the business program, which I hear is also one of the things that is going to be cut or you're thinking of cutting, which I hope is not going to happen. By cutting just one teacher, you're losing almost an entire program. That teacher you plan on creating, cutting, she also creates an environment in the classroom that all children can learn, which is something that a parent of a child with a learning difference you want to have those opportunities. Business sense is needed in all kinds of professions. Techs, trade schools require students to have courses in basic business. Our ninth and 10th grade students, their elective options are dwindling. I have always stressed to my kids, have options. Make sure whatever you do in life, give yourself choices and options. We are taking those options away from our kids by removing all of these electives. You're going to be forcing children out of the district. People are not going to want to move here. Honestly, full disclosure, I have one child already at P C T I in the Stowe Academy because the options were not here for him with his learning difference. And he's excelling. And I want my daughter to be able to excel here in West Milford where she wants to be. Please allow these children to excel and stop cutting all these classes. Thank you.
Next speaker. That's all we have signed up. Is there anyone else that I'd like to see? Dr. Goff. I have to go into the bathroom. I'm not being rude. You can start without me. I will put my notes in. I lost my notes when it's back. So Marissa Goff, resident at 34 Center Street. I just wrote my notes like ten minutes ago, so bear with me. At the last Board of Ed meeting, it was kind of brought up to my attention that apparently there are all these grants out there that we have the capability of potentially getting. So of course, I went down this big rabbit hole. I started to ask people in the district, out of the district, that are on the board, that are not on the board, whoever may be that are teachers. And I said, "Please tell me more about this because I am just learning what grant, about all these grants and what we have access to as a public school." So I asked that the Board of Ed, admin, teachers, parents, residents, help us take on the task of writing grants. We need to write letters to other towns, senators, companies, and entrepreneurs, just to name a few. Derek Jeter, who had a house in Greenwood Lake. Laureen Jobs, who lived in Westmofford. Redman, I don't know if anybody goes on social media, but the big music producer that frequents our Thai restaurant in town. There are so many different options out there. I have taken a deep dive on this since last month's meeting. Grant writing works if it's done right. The message that I keep coming across is to be proactive. I use this in practice daily with my patients. Grant research should not be crisis instigated or responsive to an emergency. It should be an ongoing process, so how we're not doing this already blows my mind. The why and the what. Why are we asking for money? What will this investment of X amount of money over X amount of years help our district with? Has to be clear, concise, and comprehensive. What else I've learned is that there are millions of dollars out there in grants. I can take this upon myself and put yet another subcommittee together, but why not get a pro to do it? There are individuals who do this for a living. If I, if done right, efficiently, it would only be a success. If you ask parents to do it who have no experience whatsoever, there's an obvious learning curve. If I was asked to do it, I would give it a hundred and ten percent and I would try my best to do it right, but you're coming from zero experience. You prepare to fail if you fail to prepare. That was something that I was taught myself in high school. So why set it up for failure? You can pay me a hundred and fifty dollars to go to a grant writing workshop from what I've read, William Patterson offers one. Or we can hire someone and get someone out there and get us out of this hole quick before we close another school or cut more programs. So with that said, I have another question. I don't know if you can answer directly or even answer off comment, is I just wanted to know if there was an update on the current enrollment for kindergarten for next year? We have a number. If anybody knows, if you can shout it out, we'll know. I don't have the numbers right now. I just wanted to know because according to Dr. Haber's projection, who might I add, we hired, by the way, it looks like it was a hundred and sixty-nine was the projection for 23, 24. So I just wanted to see if that was somewhat accurate. So if someone could get me that number. Can you say that again? The number that he projected for next year, 23 to 24, the kindergarten enrollment was a hundred and sixty-nine, which is, from last year was a hundred and eighty-eight in his projection. So I just wanted to see how accurate his projections were since we closed the school based off of his data. So I would. Is that the end of your speech? Yeah. So the problem with kindergarten enrollment is that, you know, we don't have a deadline. You know, hey, you have to enroll by April 15th, right? So they're still coming in. They can enroll all the way up until the first day of school. And that's, you have to have it open, they could always come in. So I don't know the absolute current numbers right now, but I know that there are probably some kindergarten students that are not enrolled yet, you know? Next speaker.
Courtney Stevenson, 307 Ridge Road. Westmofford School District needs help. We've all seen the decreasing state funding and elementary school closing and significant cuts. All of this impacts our children first and foremost, but it also impacts households without school-aged children. When a school district struggles, its community's property values plummet. Adversely, when a school district thrives, its community also benefits. It is time for the Westmofford community to come together and save its school district. We all witnessed the community work together to give and collect donations for our first responders during the fire. It is time for us to band together with the same urgency because quite frankly, our schools are on fire. Marissa Goff and I would like to lead a town hall-style session of meetings, multiple meetings, because it will not just take one, similar to the strategic planning meetings that our district led to create district goals only about a year ago. We'd like all of our stakeholders involved and we'd like all stakeholders involved and to be encouraged to attend. This would include administration, Board of Ed members, teachers and staff, parents, students, and all community members. We'd focus our sessions on grant writing as Dr. Goff just mentioned. They are out there. In my research, I, who also knows nothing about grant writing, I found state-funded grants and even some from NJEI. Another session would be on soliciting donations, big donations from celebrities who grew up here, love the Redman idea, businesses whose CEOs have connections to our town, businesses who wish to grow in our town, in our town, those that are growing and need tax refunds and relief, and many others. Finally, a session would focus on writing to our governor, senators, assemblymen and women, and others in Congress who have created the algorithm for the S2 funding, those who are allowing PCI, PCTI to double dip and just to get our Westmofford voices heard. Marissa and I can and will lead this venture, but we need you to provide a meeting place and dates. We need you to get the word out there for us. We understand your jobs entirely too well and you are in need of help. Let us help you and let us all work together right now.
We're at thirty minutes, trustees, so I guess before we extend, let me ask the public first. Do we have someone else that I would like to speak? Okay, yes. Go ahead.
So I'd like to make a motion to extend the public comment session beyond thirty minutes.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Julia Chesky, 22 Glen Cross Road. I am here to speak about my concerns of the safety of my children at our new school, Marshall Hill. I'll give you a little background on my concerns. Many of you were here the last time I spoke. Five years ago, I was brand new to this district. I came here to our current school, Westbrook, to register my oldest daughter for kindergarten. I was buzzed into the school expecting to see the office when I walked in, but I was in a hall with access to three classrooms. I continued to walk down the hallway looking into each room until I found the office. I walked past three full classrooms of children before I made it to the office and no one stopped me to ask me why I was there. I was a stranger to the building. What if I was not who I said I was? On anthony. This had been just a few days after the devastating Parkland, Florida, school shooting. I was so worried about my daughter's safety that I came to a Board of Ed meeting and voiced my concerns. I was thrilled to see the changes you made to Westbrook. The office has been moved to the front of the building, another set of doors have been added to create a locked and secure vestibule with a security window leading right to the office. Great improvements. However, today, I find myself here again now that we are being moved out of Westbrook, this time with two children in the district. I'm upset and disappointed that the improvements to increase security were not made at every school. Since the official announcement of our new school, I have been attending the Marshall Hill PTA meetings. When walking into the building, I can't help but notice the lack of security at the main entrance. I would like to see the same upgrades made to Marshall Hill that were made here at Westbrook. Unfortunately, school shootings have not stopped. In fact, they are more frequent now than ever before. Everyone always thinks a mass shooting will never happen to their town, their school, or their family. What if we are next? How will you keep my children safe? I know because of budgets and other factors, renovations to improve safety are not always funded, but I ask you to make this a priority when finalizing the budget because when it comes to school violence, we do not get second chances. Thank you.
We have another speaker.
See, I'd like to make a motion to close all the comments.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
No.
We do not need a second executive session and so we can.
I move to adjourn.
Go ahead.
I move to adjourn at 8:17 PM.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?